America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes for July twenty first, twenty twenty five.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Kanozki. Commissioner Hatch, what we call come from this side there. Okay, any discussion? No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes, July twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, special meeting. Commissioner Yulikamp.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Kanozki. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. July, approval of the minutes, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, special meeting.
Make a motion to approve those.
Commissioner Kanozki.
Second.
Commissioner Hatch. Any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, words and proclamations, nothing? Nothing on, no public hearing tonight, nothing under bid opening, nothing under visitors and delegations. We will go into portfolio and it will be Commissioner Pierce.
You got it, Chief.
Well, we had one person attend some fire training in Mandan this past weekend and then we opened up our position at the fire department. Hopefully, we can get somebody in the next few weeks. That's what I got.
And we got some discussion on a few things under old business for my side, but I'll talk about it then. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Yulikamp.
Mike, streets?
Nothing for streets tonight, Commissioner. Just questions.
Anything cemetery?
We haven't started any work on that roadway yet. The contractors. Contractor was here, they're scheduling, they have like three different projects and when they don't have anything going on anywhere else, they're here. We have a completion date, so once the, they would exceed that completion date, if they don't get things done, then they'll be charged liquidated damages. But until that point, we work with them under schedule accordingly.
Good, okay. Commissioner Hatch?
Dominic.
Oh.
It's a good thing.
Planes are landing.
Things are going good out there. Yep, got a new record of boardings for the first time ever. We got twelve hundred seventy-five, I think, total this month, which is two hundred more than last year.
That's awesome.
Wow.
You think that's because we stopped the Jameson?
Jameson's also up apparently from what I'm hearing from them.
Awesome.
Thank you. Rob?
Uh, just the only thing I've got is rent zone. Uh, we brought that in front of the commission last month. We need to get in front of the school district to get a letter of support from them, which we were able to get. I got everything submitted and so our renewal application has been approved for ten years. So we've got another ten year extension on our rent zone zone. So now we're getting to work on promoting that and getting out and contacting all the property owners to try and take advantage of that opportunity for everybody. Unless you have questions for me, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Mike, sanitation?
Nothing for sanitation tonight, Commissioner. As far as engineering, we have a couple items on the agenda related to like pay estimates and some of the work that's been completed on the roadways today. So we'll discuss that one.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioner Kanozki.
Mike, sewer or what?
I think Commissioner Kanozki did a tour of the water plant. Maybe he would be able to give us an update on water plant operations.
How much retaining?
What I found out is very complicated. A lot you go into it, so it's pretty cool actually to see how that take place. The building and the facilities that people maintain and the technical expertise that you need to be able to run that. It's more complicated than I took it for granted.
Yeah, we're very fortunate, you know, with the funding that we received to replace our entire drinking water supply system. And the condition that it's, you know, I think there's a lot of pride up there. I think you would have noticed that. I mean, when you go in, that looks like a hospital, things are clean, things are organized and it's, it's something to be proud of. That's all I have for you.
Very good. That's all I have for you.
And Chief, I have you and then you're going to give us an update on the SRO, you understand?
Yeah, I guess Mr. Peter Alves had decided I should do that.
Yeah.
We actually, yeah, he did. We, we actually met with Super Tank Gluten last Thursday. Kind of the goal of mine was to revisit our cost share with the Dublin Public School System and the SRO program. If it was at forty thousand per year and that was based on, I think, we had covered the airport at that time and there was some hybrid funds, you know. Depending, I think it was a three-way thing, the city, the school system, the funds for the airport. We ceased that under Mayor Luke Johnson. We went to seventy thousand per year, but now we're, we're looking at a seventy-five percent, a seventy-five percent share. So our school resource officers are, they're in the schools nine months out of the year. But during that time, we could pull them off for training and other, other needs like added circumstances. So that's kind of what we're looking at. Mine does the same thing with their school program. So doing that computation with the salaries that our two SRAs are, we're looking at to getting around a hundred and ten thousand per year. So we're going to make it a, an effort to get there incrementally. So this, this year it'll be a ninety-five thousand dollar share from the Dublin Public School System. And then next year, the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year, we're going to do right around that hundred and ten thousand dollar level. We're going to build it up slowly and they agreed to that and all write that in our MOU. So that's been, and they've been doing a great job in the school system. We went to two SRAs in two thousand eighteen. Kirsten Dallas's eighth year is coming up, so.
Do you get any other federal funding for that or state funding?
We do not. The school system gets their federal funding and they help to pay for that. The other thing I was going to add, the SRO sheet, this is our second year coming up in the SRO program. So that's actually the first time that we'll have the same SRAs back to back since we went to two. Because they're always, it's a tough position to fill. We're fortunate with Kirsten Dallas. He is Corporal Dallas now. He's done fantastic.
Yeah, you hear good things, yeah.
And they really bridge the gap between the school, the parents, the students, their liaison with our agency. So what they do is they have a lot of empathy and compassion, but still have, you know, the presence of security and the peace. Unless you have any questions, that's, that's all I got.
That's everything?
Yes.
Oh, anybody got questions for him? Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Spencer's not here tonight. He's on vacation and some of his items will be coming up in the budget, preliminary budget review. So Jason, have you got anything?
Yes, we have three proposed ordinances on the agenda for tonight. I'll get to those under new business. In addition, we have three obliged structure hearings scheduled for September fourth. Those hearings will take place subject to successful service on the property owners, which is the issue we had back in April. This time, we're utilizing sheriff's deputies exclusively to serve those instead of certified. So the properties involved would be the, the church that was discussed at the last meeting. I believe it's referred to as the Fifth Avenue Apartments, if that's correct. And then there's residential property to the southeast of Peterson Building. So that, those are the three that, that never had a hearing. The others are being dealt with. With Nathan Bennett to either. Were subject to hearings or are proceeding with those, those properties. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, one item I have is I'd like to talk about is like new business type permits. You know, we get a business that starts and a lot of times we know nothing about a business. You know, I mean, unless they register with the chamber or come in and have a, have to have a license to operate. A lot of places are, you know, they move into a store and we don't even know about it until somebody sees something. And I was just thinking it would be a good practice to have something like a, a new business permit program. Doesn't have to cost anything. It's just a matter of city all knows that who's operating a business within our community. And I don't know, I, I would guess, Jason, we would have to have an ordinance that says that.
Yeah, I think it was just. Business license or license to transact business within the city limits.
I know they have to have a sales tax license or something, but we don't get made aware of that until way later. I don't know, it's just something that, you know, we had a couple vape shops open up and nobody had a clue that they opened up. And until they actually were operating and, and if they don't become a chamber member, unless you don't participate in that stuff, you don't know what's going on.
Mayor was discussing too with me that it would be a good idea to, to start with that change put in there. What we expect from businesses, having your storefront, you know, clean and, and appearance nice and no storing of this, this and this, you know, to kind of.
Yeah, we have those issues downtown.
The mayor brings up a good point with that vape shop. You know, you can give them rules and regulations because they were living in that one.
Yeah.
You had to go down there and make sure that they do what they can, that there's a zone that's commercial we can. I don't know if they were acting as security or if they were employees.
Exact purpose for this permit, so you know there, there's some basic rules that are required and, yeah. And, and they're, you know.
Is that something that, you know, other cities have and is there?
I really don't, do not know. I just, you know, it's just, it's happened a few times here and it's like, yeah, I've heard of, somebody asked me something, I've never heard of it.
Yes, the conversation started because he said, we were talking, he said, I don't even know unless, unless there's a ribbon cut. Yeah. You know, so somebody walks up to the mayor of the city and says, what's going in this building? And the mayor says, I don't know.
Right. It's not a good look.
I mean, it's probably to reinvent the wheel.
I would think we're not.
Probably something that we could duplicate from someplace else, so.
Well, I don't know who that would fall under.
I can look up that, Mr. Mayor, I did research on that.
Well, and then we can direct Jason on another later date about what we need to do to require, what, what our expectations will be.
Yes.
And one of the issues is a storefront, if you're closed, you know, the owner of the building needs to maintain a storefront as though it looks like it's operational, not let it drag down to.
Right, so that could follow even under the lighted structure.
Yeah, we'd like to have something like that done too. All right, that's just for discussion.
Is there, is there a estimated time you want me to get that information back to you, Mr. Mayor?
I would say it's just work at your pace on it. I mean, I don't think there's a, I mean, we've been going a long time without it, so.
Right.
But.
That's why I mentioned it wasn't an expectation.
Well, yeah, within several months, I would say. Yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah. Get right on when I get home.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Well, if that's it, under commission, anybody have any alibis? If not, we'll move on. We'll get into old business and the first item is the picnic benches on Fourth and Fourth is what it's on the agenda. So we'll open that up for the discussion of the commission and to see what direction that we should be talking.
After our last meeting, our last commission meeting, we heard from some of the businesses downtown. And then I had a discussion with the police chief as well on his feelings of those picnic tables on Fourth and Fourth. And how they become just a, a collection point for folks that are down there. The, you know, the homeless shelter, it's only open in the evening. It's not open all day long. So once you leave there for the day, there's no place to go. I understand that. Um, and it was talked about how that's the front yard and backyard of those folks living in the apartments up top. The way I look at it is, no, that is not your front yard and backyard. I've thought a lot about it. That is our business district and that's the alleys where they unload and unload supplies and that's not really, you, you, you are living there, yes, but that's not a front yard and backyard. That is a place for our citizens to go to be able to shop, feel safe and everything else that goes with it. So my, my vote, or, and I talked with, with Mr. Grassguard as well. He thought about maybe having a petition go around to see people to sign whether they want them to go or not. I think we're kind of past that point personally, I believe. We've talked enough about this that I think it's, it's past that point. We've heard from, you know, some business owners down there being affected by them. So, you know, I'd like to make a motion to remove the bench, the picnic.
Can we have further discussion before you make a motion? I appreciate everybody having a little voice in the matter first. And so, not that, yeah, I'm not trying to stop that, but I would like to have other, you know, ideas or concerns.
I just think we have to start somewhere and if that's where we start, that's where we start.
I feel like getting rid of the benches is not going to solve the problem. The problem's still going to be there. There's many issues going on that need to be solved. And just getting rid of the benches is not going to solve it. Still going to be there.
I never thought it was a solve, a solvable. I think it's just one step to keep, see where they, see where people move to, kind of build from there and, and, and take more initiatives to see what that affects. And if that affects, doesn't work, they can go back, you know, but, but at least try something to, to start moving forward. Other than saying it's not going to solve anything, I believe it's, it's a right step in the right direction just to see what can, what, what can happen.
Well, I think the whole initiative needs some problem solving. You know, there's some, taking the benches down is, or having the benches is one problem. Housing downtown is another problem. Curfew. Yeah, but there, there's some, there's quite a few problems, but those problems need to be worked down to find solutions.
I looked into the, the, um, what, what could be done with the apartments in the section eight housing downtown. We as a city cannot rezone them because it's equal opportunity housing. You know, it, we, that's the law. We can't do that. What else can we do with it, you know? I, it's just been wrapping my brain on that, Commissioner Hatch. I don't know how to help that.
Yeah.
You know, we'll be, Mr. Mayor, we'll be, we'll be discussing the homeless, homeless shelter here later too as well. But I, I think that we've, our, our, the citizens are, are speaking to us and we, we got to start listening a little bit just to try. And like you said, whittle this down, see what works, what doesn't work. I did speak with Mr. Thompson. They said that the, the increased foot traffic downtown, the police traffic has, has started to help. They said they can see the difference. So thank you to your patrolmen for, for doing that. But I, I think we, we just have to start taking, taking that chance of seeing what works and what doesn't work until we can start whittling down the, the exact problem. Let's try and, and see.
I agree, it's not going to solve it, you know. We're going to take that away and now they're going to move somewhere else.
I mean.
But.
Why not try and problem solve it before we, I mean, if we take action, let's say we remove the benches.
There could be further. Bitches and the tables. I'm just talking those picnic tables on Fourth and Fourth. I'm not talking any of the benches.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking the picnic tables is what I'm talking about. I'd call them benches.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kanozki, your input?
Well, you know, in the past, before we had the beautification downtown, we didn't have that type of issue downtown. We still had issues in the alleys and whatnot and people still migrate regardless, right? And like you said, the problem's not going to be solved, but I do agree to the fact that we need to do something other than sit on our hands. And so, you know, if we can remove those for, even for a temporary basis to see if it affects anything. If we still have the people standing around doing nothing or whatever we're doing, and that's not causing, there's no cause of effect. And then, well, then that's not the problem, right? You know, when we removed that one when we were downtown over by the Nails Place. And then they didn't have that issue. Well, of course, you're not going to get smoke in their business because there's nobody smoking in front of it anymore, but. But with that being said, I mean, you, like you say, you got to do something other than just sit there and we can talk about it and we can talk about solving problems, but you know, what, what are they? I mean, how are we going to do it? What's the answer? You know, it's like you're having a problem and then asking somebody, what's the problem? And then I have nothing answered for it. You know what I mean? So it's tough to ask questions like that because they're social questions. They're social questions, you know.
I mean, but is the bench or the real root cause?
I guess, I guess that's where I'm going. Right, they're not, they're not the root cause. I mean, the root cause is, is, you know, degradation of society, you know what I mean? So it has nothing really, what else can you do, you know?
Fargo themselves are moving there. They're removing all theirs. They say it's because of it's not, the thoroughfare is not wide enough. But I don't believe that. I believe, because I've spoken to people that live in Fargo, like my kids live in Fargo, that go downtown. They are having the same situation. They're having people loitering and, and using those benches as collection places. So that, I, that's the real reason I believe Fargo's moving. That's just my personal belief. I have no fact in that. But I, I like, I, I agree.
Well, when we left the last meeting, I drove downtown and I did see five people that would be kind of what you'd consider intimidating, sitting on one bench. And, you know, and it's unfortunate because, you know, they, I believe they have a right to be there. They weren't hurting anything, but they would be, they would scare a, a person that. A, a young lady or, you know, older person, you know, they would go the other side and it, it had a bad look, but they were doing nothing wrong. And, you know, and I'm, I'm, I kind of tend to lean with Rob is I hate to, you know, have to cave into the, what, what we put on more, the purpose of those picnic tables. Because it is meant for the downtown beautification and for the general public, which some of those, they are general public, you know. But, but we have a deeper problem. We have a homeless shelter that I think we got individuals that if we didn't have that downtown, we'd be, I think there's a multiple.
There is.
That we have to solve in all the, in all the, the individuals that are living in some of these apartments is.
After going through everything and talking with everybody and all the factors, there's no way to, to pinpoint one. There's no way to say this is going to be a fix-all. And that's what, that's what aggravates me the most about this whole thing is that, you know.
The only thing I'd see is they're, they're definitely going to move. They're already sitting on the steps of the Heritage Center, right, Lisa? They spent a lot of time there. You know, so I've seen that, but maybe they're not congregating in Fourth and Fourth, so everybody, at least the people that are walking can get down the streets. I could see that being a benefit where they're not just sitting there right where people are walking, where the most traffic is at. That might be the only benefit I see from that.
That's right.
You know, but they're going to move to somewhere else and so, I don't know.
And I, I believe too that we, if we make it less inviting. For, for, for now, I mean, people, we're, we're not enforcing anything other than the police going, walking downtown. We're not making any effort to, to make these, these folks, and I feel bad by saying it, but making these folks know you can't just loiter here. You just can't hang out all day long, every day. We're, we're giving them, they have the opportunity to do that by making it more inviting to do those types of things. And if we make it less inviting, maybe they'll move on. Maybe, maybe it'll, it'll go someplace.
I believe the police presence has made a difference without a doubt in my mind. I believe that for a fact.
So I just, I just. It's a hard decision to make.
Right. I mean, it's a start. We've got, got to start something. So I'll second him.
I'll make a motion to, to remove the picnic benches at Fourth and Fourth, the three remaining. I'll prefer engineering to keep those and store those in case for further use if we need to, to move them back.
And you're not talking the bench, you're talking the tables.
Just the picnic tables at Fourth and Fourth, the three remaining picnic tables.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Hatch, any further discussion? No further discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Yulikamp.
Aye.
Commissioner Pierce.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Hatch.
Aye.
Mayor.
Passes. Okay. Yep, next item is the benches at Pitt Bridgestone Park.
This was brought up just as a conversational piece, just thought, notice, I don't have any motions to bring up on this, but also speaking with Chief, Chief Toso. You know, the thought of maybe removing some of the either benches or a combination of benches and picnic table or something downtown. But after I spoke with Mr. Thompson, he said that the, the patrols and stuff are, are starting to change stuff down there right now. But I just wanted to keep it for, for thought. If your officers see anything down there, let us know, please. Because we do want to make that an inviting area for people to be.
One thing is, Mike, we used to have people driving downtown and kind of collecting kind of the garbage, you know. Do we still do that process? Could they scan that part? Because I understand there's some unwanted materials there that could be dangerous to kids when they're over there. Is that, would that be a problem having someone just kind of walk that? So that the, the kid, the daycare doesn't have to have sent someone out in advance to walk through there? Is that, it sounds to me there could be some things that you don't want the kids to find. I don't know if, you know, it's, I don't know how long, it shouldn't take long, but at least identifying. Yeah, yeah.
We, we've been getting random calls over the years.
Yeah, if that's happening over there, you know, that's the, you know, because I know the daycare uses that part and the kids come over. But they have to send out a kind of a scout to make sure that they walk through there to make sure there's nothing dangerous for them to find.
So we helped to develop the park, but the park district is, it's a park. So the park district has been doing the maintenance. We do have a contract with Lake Region Corporation, you know, they're picking up items downtown. But I can visit with Dennis over at the park district to see what involvement they would have and try and.
If they could just do that.
Either be them or it'd be Public Works trying to do a walk through once in a while.
I just think that'd be helpful. I mean.
And another great thing that came up in the conversations with the other cities and stuff in the state that I spoke with and, and even it came, it came up in one of our downtown safety meetings. Have some events throughout the summer to where we invite food vendors down there to bring the community to that area. To show, you know, the, the police presence down there, having the community take part in that, that park in that area will kind of make people move along as well. They said they've, other cities said they've seen great progress with that. So that was just a thought that maybe talk to the park board. You know, every other Wednesday or every other Thursday, whatever, you know, have, have something where.
Instead of being out by the park and, the tacos could be downtown with the post taco.
It could be, it could be something to kind of get the community together and go out.
Yeah.
It brings that, the tracks of people down to the downtown area. So maybe they'll start walking around.
Anything you can do to help that, yeah? Okay, anything else on that?
So what, I mean, how many, I mean, there's quite a few benches in that small, small area.
There's six, I was going to bring that up. There's, there's two high back benches, two picnic tables, two just flat benches.
Yeah.
I think the high back bench.
It's a park.
Mr. Thompson and I had talked, I think that's where they're laying on those, those high back benches like.
Yeah.
And maybe doing things they should.
Right. Would that be acceptable if we just did some of these other things for you guys? Well, if we have someone scan the area before, you know, keep, keep a better tab on it.
Pretty close watch on it. I, I just don't know when the daycares come over.
I agree.
I know it's important to my vision.
Yep.
Try to keep it the best I can. So I try to keep up with it a little bit. Some of the stuff I see over there, like, ooh, okay.
I know, I've heard that and I don't like hearing that.
You know, but I make sure I call them.
Yep.
And they do a really nice job.
Okay. Well, if we approve some of that, would that be acceptable? We just left that alone?
Kind of keep an eye on it and see if.
Yeah, I should keep an eye on it for you. I, I, you know, if it's getting to be out of hand or what's taking over, you know.
And I'll, I'll talk, I'll talk with the, the park board too and see if they're interested in doing something like that throughout the summer, months.
At least when they mow, they should just take a pee. They just mow and they run over the garbage and. Like they, I don't know when they mow, but.
I think there's been personal belongings there as well, right?
Yeah.
Backpacks and. We find those all throughout downtown.
I usually call these when somebody that just let them know it's there.
And one thing I'd like to ask now to this, to the end of this year is that to our business owners downtown, please don't be afraid to call and make that actual. Word I'm trying to think of, make, make, make an actual.
Call for service.
Call for service and, and sign, sign the, the reports and, and be part of that to help save that.
You can be anonymous, but then they'll get the general gist of.
Please, yeah, don't be afraid. Take that time because until they can start identifying the troublemakers downtown, there's not much they can do. If there's a record of people doing this over again, then, but, but please don't be afraid to, to, to take your city, take your downtown back.
Todd, what was, what's your initial thought on the whole bench thing? I mean. No, in the park, Thompson Park.
Dan Johnson avoided that.
I mean, as far as what?
The benches.
I'm, I'm keeping them all.
Well, I remember when Project came through, you know, got the sidewalks invented and I thought it was a great idea.
Yeah.
I really thought it was like, wow, this is cool. This is, you know, but we attracted the wrong crowd to that area. You know, and, and I don't see a lot of people that have their lunches there or, you know, things like that. I see people just hanging out. You know, I don't think that's what it was meant for and that's just the way it ended up. Across the street. I, I, I push people pretty hard in there. I, there, it's pretty visible. Your, your, probably your biggest traffic is the post office.
Right.
And there's a lot of people that see that stuff. And, um, you know, there's a lot of people that stop at that post office and they see the park and the, you know, but I, you know, there's a place for them. You know, there's a place for them. I just think that we need to start deterrence something and, you know, it's a good step.
I'll, I'll speak with the park board about the summers having, lunchtime, having some food vendors out there to try and get the public to sit and have their lunches out there, try to make it more, more attractive and.
Like we're, you know, the wine walk, they start the wine walk there. They put the trays that are really good.
Yeah.
And I know that daycare uses it a lot. People from the Great Northern use it a little bit. That's, that's what I see. That's a different problem. Ever since Nellie's or that's closed down, it's gotten better, way better. So, you know, those kind of factors was really, you know, and the presence of, you know, the officers down, down, huge, huge. You know, and they're, you know, I came down on a Sunday morning and they're walking the alley from the top. They didn't want to do it, you know, but.
Well.
Nobody wants to do any, any of these choices, these hard decisions and hard jobs, but that's what we're here for.
Got to burn out the gathering from doing it some way.
We should put a donut shop downtown, right?
Todd, yeah, you could. It's good to get out of the vehicle.
Yes, it is. But so I'm getting, I'm getting the sense that we're just going to leave it all?
For now.
We're not going to do anything?
Yep.
So are we done with discussion on this?
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the curfew ordinance proposal.
Speaking with Chief Dosso and, and Commissioner Hatch, they were, I was asking them about the curfew and they said that there was one in our, um, our ordinances. So I went and looked at it and they said in the past, you guys used to really enforce it, Mr. Hatch. So I looked at it and kind of looked at the wording of it. And you can see in front of you there, just replaced it with, with more straight to the point. Instead of it being, you know, any child under the age of 14 of years of age, or any child under the years of 15 years of age, I just put it in there that it's unlawful for any child under the age of 18 years to remain in or upon the streets, alleys, parks or public places in the city after 11:00 PM, unless accompanied by a parent or guardian or some adult authorized by such parent or guardian. And next one would be, it's unlawful for any parent, guardian or other person having legal care and custody of any child under the age of 18 years of age to allow or permit any such child or ward while in such custody go to or to be in or upon any of the streets, alleys, parks or public places in the city within the time prescribed by or contrary to provisions of this section. And then put that in there that any person violating this section, I should have took the number out of there.
Yeah, I don't think we can set that.
No, uh, to juvenile curfew shall be subject to a fine of $80. This is an idea of if it's a repeat thing going on, can we set a fine on that?
I think we can't set fines, can we?
So the fining is usually done to the parent or guardian.
Yeah.
And that's a hundred dollars. And that's still the other part of this, because I don't think you intended, Commissioner Pierce, to omit that part.
No, I just, no.
Just, this is the first part.
Just making it more, more, instead of this long wording of it, make it more per, to the point. So that, this is just ideas I had to bring up.
Juvenile laws have changed. They're trying to decriminalize them. So curfew is one of them. Curfew law is a violation, is a CHINS violation, and that is children who need services. So that goes to the Health and Human Service in North Dakota. We email a referral for that violation. I, I was told that was like just got a CHINS regional. If you want to call it director or person here to deal with those children that are referred for these violations to handle those. Um, but there is really no teeth though. I, I don't know if there's a checklist that juvenile court does, how many violations you need in CHINS to go to an official. I don't think there is one. But this is our whole plan to decriminalize juveniles, not give them a record and try to intervene.
But there can be, within the, within the city ordinance, there already is a hundred dollar fine.
There is that, and that's for the, again, the parents are, and then there's exceptions that we have to keep.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
If you let Johnny, you know, so I don't look at Joe for that, but Joey, would go stay at somebody's place. Now if that, if that parent really can't, you know, control what happens there, it's the other parents. So you have to really look at a lot of different variables.
Yeah.
And then if they're at a school function or a school event.
Cause I was thinking maybe this, if this was more strictly enforced, it would take care of a lot of the, the tagging and graffiti um, that we're seeing downtown and on our, on our, our viaducts, you know, our east and west viaducts. Things of that nature and kind of show another, another thing as to where the city's starting to get serious about this vandalism and this crime. It was just an idea to kind of get your guys' opinion on it and see if that's something that the commission wanted to pursue.
Well, initially, for me, reading the, the 18-year-old thing kind of made it a little difficult, you know, just for the fact that, you know, you're going from 14 or 15 to an 18, you know.
Under the age of 18.
Yeah. And I realize that's considered juvenile, but again, I mean, um, other, other cities probably have an ordinance like this. What are they enforcing? Is it the same kind you're saying?
This, this year was worded off of Fargo's.
Okay.
This is worded off.
Eighteen or under, right?
I, I like not playing games with what age period and what timeframe you're in. Cause our current one is 10:30, 11:00 and both 14, 15 and 16. Then it gets extended to now or if you're, don't have school.
Oh, yes.
Or if it's a holiday.
Yeah.
Or if it's a summer between June 1st and August, I mean, come on, cops can't do math anyway. So let's, let's, I, I was thinking maybe midnight and maybe omit 17 still and just do everybody younger than 17. That's what I was thinking, but.
It sounds like it needs some, you know, some work and some ideas.
It was, it was, you know, if.
It's a good start point, I think.
I think enforcing curfews.
I think one timeframe is a good thing.
What I looked through, a lot of them were, a lot of them were 18 and under when I researched the other ordinances throughout the state. Uh, but like I said, it's not something we can't or change.
Under 18.
Under, under, so you don't want 18.
Under the, under the age of 18.
Under the age.
Yeah, sorry. But.
The old omitted 17.
See, this is the problem we had, and Rob can attest to this, in the, in the past, we had cell block 91 in the youth center.
Yeah.
The kids would be dropped off there and they run, wrap it around downtown, whatever, crimes of opportunity. We, we, you know, we don't have that now, that part of it, you know?
But we're still.
The youth center, but we still have, you know, there's.
Still windows being broken, still spray paint being done.
Drinking alcohol.
Damages.
Trouble with dealing with juveniles if they're not from this area, because sometimes they're not, because we're such a hybrid community. And then it's difficult to tie up an officer and we only have two working. We don't really rely on anybody else. So, you know, a lot of times officers may, hey, obviously that a mind just moved along.
Yeah.
But it just depends on what's going on at that minute.
There's going to be common sense in it, you know what I mean? Like, like, like you said, chief, there, there's going to be you know, certain times and situations and common sense involved. I just think it's another step of us saying, we're getting serious about this and we're not going to put up with it anymore.
I think the onus lies with the parents for sure and the guardians.
Yeah.
I think we have done that and we continue to do that, but probably could do, be done some more.
So do we need to have Jason rewrite, rewrite it with what we want? The ordinance and?
Yeah, you know, just, if, if Jason, if you can take a look at it more and if you want me to be a part of it, please contact me or Mayor or Spencer, whoever. I just think it's something we need to look at as another, another tool to try and, and move forward in.
It would just be the first part, 9.72010.
Yeah.
Looking at maybe one timeframe.
Yeah, simple, the simple.
And then a lot of your wording, I think is good.
You're right.
Keep, and keep the, yeah, just, let's not change it. Let's keep it that.
I can do that, Commissioner, but as far as the penalty clause, I think the existing penalty clause is greater because it says it's, it's an infraction. Well, the bottom schedule, a hundred dollars. I, I don't know who would fight a curfew violation, but an infraction is maximum of a thousand dollar fine. So, um, and, and I understand the point about making this more concise. Um, and I can't imagine coming up against an attorney who would want to try to argue against the curfew violation in court. But the current ordinance has language that just might come in handy, like the being in a vehicle.
Okay.
You know, a person could argue, I wasn't on the street. I was in a car. As far as the age limit, to me, it's not, it's not a legal question. It's a policy one. So if it's eight, if it's under 18, it makes no difference to, to, to me, from, from my perspective as the attorney. So I guess what I, what I was saying is, um, all right, it, uh, however the commission wants, but I do think there's, there's definitely value in keeping the penalty clause that's currently in the municipal code. And maybe give it some thought as to keep, I, I don't know, going with the more verbose, but also robust language that you have right now.
With, with being in a vehicle.
Yeah.
That's, that needs to remain.
Do, do you see the $100 in here or did?
No, I was.
So is that something that was just?
I thought that you, you had mentioned that.
Yeah, it is.
Cause I didn't see it when I looked at.
We've always wrote, written it at a hundred dollars. Is there a reason why we've done that? I don't have the history in front of me, but.
We can make it up.
We sure can do the infraction at 2:50 and just, that'd be good.
Cause I see it as infraction, but, and, and I'm, I'm sorry to, I'm just going to be out with it. The lawyer sees infraction. He looks at what the, the law says, a thousand dollar maximum. What a bomb schedule is, is what a judge or police officer would look at.
We, we really can't do the infraction with the children.
No, no.
It would just be the parent or guardian.
So I, and I understand that, I'm, I'm sorry, chief, but I, I understand that the, the dynamic where it's decriminalized for the juvenile, but really I, I was speaking of going after the parents.
Yeah.
No, I agree.
Chief, would you work with, with Jason?
Sure.
And I appreciate Jason, all you can do, you know? I just, I, I want, I want people to believe that and, and see that we're trying something. So I guess that could be just tabled for later once the.
Right. And the, and the other item, the homeless, we can't deal with that. It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So then do you bring, okay, so you stop a kid from being on the street. Do you then bring them home to their parents and then hand the parents a ticket or what, or how is that?
Right. It would depend on a lot of times. And again, the area we're in, sometimes we've written complaints to the parent or guardian. You just can't locate them. And then we, it's, you're looking at a different relative or somebody in the area that you can release the juvenile to. It really gets to that point. Again, it's a time thing based how busy they are. Oftentimes we only have two officers working that night, but. Yeah, I mean, it could be, we could coordinate with, let's say if the child was in a different community, we maybe coordinate with their deputies or maybe BIA if it's in spirit. Try to have a meeting phone, phone, contact ends your phones. A lot of times that's unsuccessful or it's quite lengthy.
But it surely does give you an opportunity to stop and talk to each other.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's just what you want. That's what we want to do. That's, you know, gives us our nexus to why we're having conflict. Because they look like they could be under the age or in that, that age, but that's what we've done for a lot of different minors and some.
As an example, just this, this weekend at 11 o'clock, there was four or five male juveniles walking down my alley. I was having my cigarette on my back porch and they're pointing at houses. You know, so you don't know, they could be just having a conversation about something, but you just don't know. So keep, keep that, stop and talk to them. Let them know, hey, we're, we're watching. We're doing this.
Okay.
All right, sir.
No, that's right. Okay.
Is there any age, 50 under 18?
No, I would say, I would be favorable under, under 18.
The midnight thing? Give them another hour.
Well, I mean, it kind of encompasses everybody, you know what I mean? So for me, I mean.
Usually.
Really, you're not a daddy going to have a 10 anyway.
School functions are done. You're giving them a little hour.
And there's nothing good after midnight. I used to tell my kids, yeah, nothing good.
I told my kids after 10 o'clock.
Currently it's 10:30.
If we had a siren at 10 o'clock again, we'd probably send them. Or midnight siren.
So in the summertime currently, it's 11:30 to 1:00.
Right.
So if you do midnight.
Midnight.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would agree with that.
Makes it easier for the officer.
Midnight year round. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. We don't need a.
Thank you, folks, official.
Motion for that. Okay, we'll move on. Excuse me. Consent agenda, nothing. We're going to go into new business and the first item is our approval of the FY 2026 preliminary budget and setting of a public hearing date for October 6th, 2025. Spencer, uh, left us this here budget for 2026, the preliminary budget. He said it is, uh, maxed out with the 3% requirement of the maximum of what we can go up. The only thing is we can't go up anymore, but we can always come down and revisit everything down for the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, the only one question I had on this is.
You're going to ask too many questions.
I'm trying to find the page, just as a point out for, for Spencer to look at.
Yep.
There is nothing. Wait, maybe there is. Yeah, there's nothing under shade, yeah, there is, there is 2016.
We were looking at abolishing shade tree, you know, and then because we're doing contract, he was going to put it into a different account.
I, I see it here now.
His own account, right?
It's going to make his own account in the general account.
Yeah.
But he, he just stated that this is the, the max budget and knowing that we are going to make some adjustments to it. But we can't go up anymore.
Roger that. Thank you.
So it's just a preliminary and.
Yep.
We're going to make changes between now and October.
That's correct.
Perfect. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, 2026 preliminary budget.
Motion, I assume, Commissioner Kowski. Commissioner Yulka, second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Yulka.
Aye.
Commissioner Pierce.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Hatch.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next item is the appointment, reappointment and reappointment to the special assessment commission. And before us, we have list of the names. Yeah, he's been replaced by, I think.
Goodness, that's unable to pursue a reappointment for personal reasons, recommended, recommended that Luke Barver be appointed to the open position on the special system.
Yep.
For six-year term.
Okay, got it.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment and reappointment for the appointment of Luke Barver and the re, uh, reappointment of Nancy London for the special assistance committee commission.
Okay, we have Commissioner Pierce.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Kowski. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item three, Stromquist project payment and overall project cost share. Mike?
So we're working through some of the special setup process, uh, and as part of that, the Stromquist project that we recently completed, the roadway improvement project for, the paving down south of, uh, Pops. That area is 17th Street Southeast, 10th Avenue Southeast, 8th Avenue, 16th Street Southeast. We, we've discussed paving in that area for an extended period of time. The issue with paving that area was that the cost share, based on their existing city policy, nobody down there would have liked the special assessments related to putting a curb gutter in the pavement, doing the project that we did.
a curb gutter in the pavement, doing the project that we did. Total project improvement down there was near three million dollars. And so some years ago, we created a tax increment finance district, there's a lot of building improvements that were occurring in that area, and so the idea with the tax increment district was to help offset some of the improvement costs with the tax increment district and the increase in the valuation in that area. And so working through the numbers, we were able to put together a combination of improvement through our special, our urban roads funding, so we're using our urban roads, our federal funds for improving some roadways in town that are under federal aid system. We use that money in combination with tax increment finance funding as well as special assessment funding. So typically, when we go into an area, if there's new improvement, they haven't paid for roadways, they haven't paid for water mains yet, our existing city cost share policy is seventy five percent to be special assessed, twenty five percent would be funded through the city. In this particular case, because we have access to our federal aid, we have access to tax increment finance money as well as special assessment, we had put together probable assessments when we sent them out to the property owners, and that was using five hundred fifty thousand dollars. So right now, we're looking at funding that project through special assessments, as well as our urban financial aid through the federal aid with the highway funds and tax increment financing. And what we propose is using tax increment financing to fund just over a million dollars, as outlined in the memo, and we'd be special assessing about five hundred twenty three thousand. And their probable is based on five hundred fifty, and that's the proposal that we'll go with, with commission approval. So this was going to put together to make sure that we're all on board with what's happening down there. There was no way really to put a project together that would be affordable for those houses with the new roadways. It's a unique situation in this particular case. What you like to see is there's a subdivision and an improvement created, and the improvements are complete before lots are sold. You put in your water, you put in your sewer, and you develop the streets as part of the developer and developer costs. Sometimes we do that, the last few we've done is through tax increment financing, financing to help offset the costs. And so in this particular case, we still have access to tax increment financing. So of the two point eight million dollar project costs, our true local out of pocket expenses are about one point five million, and a million of that would be handled through tax increment financing, and just over five hundred thousand would be special assessed. So the memo with concurrence, that's what we'll proceed with, with the special assessments, as we're going through the the spreadsheets and putting special assessment information together for the special assessment commission. Any questions? And then Spencer had put together kind of a payment schedule, what was going to be covered with the tax increment district, and will be received through special assessment. The nice thing is, is very, I mean, it was near a three million dollar project, and we had put together probable assessments based on five fifty, and the overall assessments would be less than that, other than those that had special improvements completed, more driveway work, more concrete driveway, they had special benefit to their property that they wanted, so.
What's the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve this Stromquist project payment and overall project cost share.
Commissioner Knowski.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Pierce. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Yellen Camp.
Aye.
Commissioner Pierce.
Aye.
Commissioner Knowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Hash.
Aye.
Mayor Mo.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next items, we have three first readings, item, first reading, item four is ordinance ten nineteen, chapter nine seven three, tobacco, electronic smoking devices, alternative nicotine products.
So this is just the first reading, but what what's happening here is getting the municipal ordinance up to speed with state law, and in addition, taking nine point seven three and nine point seven four, and really combining them. Nine point seven four used to be just vaping, and actually, it still is at this moment. What they're going to become is just one entire chapter that is, that covers all of those products, anything that's nicotine related would be under nine point seven three, and so that's, when you get to the next item, it's a repeal of nine point seven four. Chief Tores is the president of the director of this ordinance, so I thank him for all the hard work he did on doing this, I just added, it's nothing earth shattering, it's just getting an update with the current criminal code, especially as it deals with minors and the use of these products. The first reading, you don't have to take me out at this time.
Okay. Any questions on the first reading? Okay, we'll move on to item five, which is the first reading of ordinance ten twenty, chapter nine seven four, dealing with vaping.
So again, if this is adopted, you're not really losing anything, it's being combined with chapter nine point seven three, all of that will be in one place, so vaping doesn't go away, you still have the prohibitions or restrictions on that type of usage of nicotine product, it's just being put in a different place, brought up to dates, so it's really the same explanation as the previous proposed ordinance. First reading, no action required with that.
Any questions? Item six, first reading of ordinance ten twenty one, section ten sixteen dash four four one, use of safety belts required in certain motor vehicles.
This ordinance was brought before the commission, not that long ago, to bring it current, there's one and only one change being made, or being asked of the commission at this time, and that is, as it currently reads, the seatbelt requirement applies to everybody in the front seat. If this, if this ordinance goes through, seatbelt requirement applies to everybody, front seat, second seat, I guess if you have a third row seat in some type of vehicle. But at the moment, the seatbelt ordinance only requires usage in the front seat, I mean, that.
So do you find the driver, or is every individual's?
The driver would be liable.
Yeah. That's okay.
Re-sees, care, custody, control belong to the driver.
So if there's three people unbuckled, the driver has to pay all fines?
Just one fine.
Yeah.
I should say, there's already language in there about child restraints, but but we're talking someone else.
Okay.
Old enough to use a regular belt.
Does this apply to side by sides as well?
What's a vehicle if they don't have seatbelts? Is there a fine for that? A classic car, for instance.
If you're manufactured.
Does it manufacture with the seatbelt in the side by side?
Yeah.
That it has it.
Okay.
Yeah, if it was originally, and that's in our current ordinance, if it's originally manufactured, they have seatbelts, then it's a requirement. And then we have, you know, a few exceptions built in there for everything, from farm vehicles to people with disabilities that, for whatever reason, couldn't wear one, that's not changing, it's just we're covering everybody in the car wearing seatbelts.
That just runs concurrent with the state law, right?
It does, it's, 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 it's going to be updated to.
I read that has manufactured the state law.
Yeah.
My classic car. Okay, okay, any questions on that? Okay, we'll move on to number seven, pay estimate two, project two fifty one oh two. Mike?
Pay estimates for some of the roadway improvement work that we're currently working on, pay estimate includes work completed today, total due assessment is one hundred eighty six thousand eight hundred sixty eight dollars and twenty three cents. So if you look at where we're at with that contract, we're about a third of the way complete through the the three different street improvement districts that we have. The north end is complete, about halfway through this, the larger one, and then the last one, we haven't really started yet. Recommend approval of pay estimate.
I'll make a motion to approve the pay estimate of one hundred eighty six thousand eight hundred sixty eight dollars and twenty three cents.
Commissioner Pierce. Commissioner Yellen Camp. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Yellen Camp.
Aye.
Commissioner Pierce.
Aye.
Commissioner Knowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Hash.
Aye.
Mayor Mo.
Aye, motion carries. The next item is the informational item, quarter two investment portfolio is on the computer, and then, if there's nothing else to come before the commission, a motion to approve payment of bills as submitted. Commissioner Yellen Camp, second. Commissioner Hash. Any further discussion? No discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Yellen Camp.
Aye.
Commissioner Pierce.
Aye.
Commissioner Knowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Hash.
Aye.
Mayor Mo.
Aye, motion carries. If there's no other things to come before the city commission, meeting. Oh. Oh, I didn't get a slip that you filled, did you fill out a slip? Well, no, I'll forgive you for that, no problem. Would you put, would you put one in there so we have record of it, though? But on citizen comment, I will accept you to come up and visit, please come to the podium. My apologies for. As long as she fills out the slip.
Just a couple, Lisa Pago, just a couple small comments I had on on budgeting, is one thing that I've heard over, I guess here it announced, is about holidays that you guys sort of have on occasion added in a holiday, a paid holiday, if it falls, say, on a Thursday, you're adding in a Friday, if it falls on a Monday, adding in a Tuesday. My thought is, we should stick with what's in the H R manual and not be adding in holidays, that's a big expense. So if you wanted a holiday, put it in the manual, otherwise, you know, everybody else has to take a vacation day.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we were going to do.
Okay.
Yep.
And then just wanted to comment, I, and I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one out here that also, I agree with Commissioner Pierce, from the meeting of seven twenty eight, that about COLA pay increases, why are they just assumed and expected? Why isn't, we should just basing salaries on merit, instead of just automatic pay increases for everyone across the board? And you even brought it up about the law enforcement center and other areas getting more than, and they're telling you, you know, reasons because they don't have pension, but you know, that's not, you know, that's not your problem. The problem is, they're, you know, they're still getting more and merit bases.
Can't give COLAs all the time, I understand.
Right, and you know, a lot of people out in the working force, they don't get COLA increases, you just get your merit based pay. So just giving you citizen input on those two items.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.[1781.64]